Hello, hello, hello. Let's get it. Let's go. Hello, hello, hello. Why does it look like that? Good morning, guys. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Welcome into the live stream. How's everybody feeling? Good morning, good morning, good morning. What's up, everybody? How are you? Good morning, good morning, good morning. Welcome to the live stream. Presented by Tostitos, the Chip Company. Hold on, let me, let me, um, one second. One second. One second, one second, one second. Oh, okay. I had this old graphic up here. That was my old socials. Yo PJ, can you go over yesterday PM session short? It was A plus. It was, it's what you teach. Um, oh, yeah, yeah, the AM, the PM session actually had a really good, a really nice short. It did have a really nice short. What's going on TikTok? How are you guys, man? TikTok, if you, uh, if you're in the TikTok and you want to actually look at what we're doing over here. I am, um, I'm currently live on the red platform right now. Um, we are going to do some chart breakdown and stuff. So if you guys want to move over from over on TT over to, uh, the tube, we'd love to see you over there, but welcome in. Guys, give me a couple of minutes to get organized. I'm going to share the stream and stuff. Into the Discord and then a couple of social media posts. So let's, uh, let's let the stream kind of fill up. It's starting to fill up right now. So let me just make sure everyone knows that we're live on the YouTube channel real quick. Live now on YouTube. Saturday morning sessions. So guys, grab a coffee, hang out a little bit, give me some time. Let me just post all this stuff on social media. Let the fine people know that we're live. Guys, like the stream, please as well, man. That's all I ask is like the stream. Let's get the stream moving and grooving. Can you get it? Give any advice on managing funded accounts? Yeah, man, you gotta manage a funded account, just like you would manage anything in life, dude. It's a professional business. And managing a funded account is, is your sole job as a trader and it comes down to risk management. It comes down to trade quality, trade filter, comes down to your emotions. It comes down to your, your, it comes down to you, man. And that's why I tell people all the time in trading, like, this is why the business is so difficult because people don't want to change, right? They don't want to be better in life. And in order to become a better trader, you have to become a better human being, right? So it's going to test all the stuff that you are bad at. That's what it's going to test. So in order to manage a funded account correctly, you might want some like straightforward answer. I can't give you one, man, because at the end of the day, you control your, you are a direct influence on your trading business. What you do is going to affect your bottom line. So if you're just lazy, if you're just not journaling, if you have no risk management, if you're, if you operate off emotions, you're never going to be able to manage a funded account, right? It doesn't matter, it matters if you $100 versus $10,000. When you get to the big leagues, you start managing bigger amount of capital. It, it numbers don't even matter, right? It's just like, you can manage a million dollars. And at the end of the day, you would be doing this, you have to be practicing the same stuff that you'd be doing on a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, right? So, yeah, man, um, managing a funded account is all going to come down to the three key principles. In my opinion, it's going to be risk management. Number one, over anything that's going to keep you alive longest. Uh, number two, it's going to be, um, your discipline and your emotional control. And then it's going to come down to the third aspect is your, your trade filter. You know, is this an A plus trade? Is this a C plus trade? You gotta be able to do that in real time. So, um, yeah, man, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into being a successful trader. Oh, wow. We've got a lot of people over on the TikTok, guys. Thank you so much for being, um, being a TikTok. Not being a TikTok, being a TikTok member, I guess, but, um, we are all, we are, we are also live on the, uh, on the red app. If you guys want to come over there and look at some charts, but for now, we're just going to answer some psychology questions. And, uh, we'll just kind of keep it, keep it moving and grooving from there and, and just see where the stream takes us. A lot of times these streams turns it, turn into your Q and A sessions. I might bring people on the Discord and we might have them little, I put my headset on and they kind of walk me through their trading journey. And I love doing that because I love engaging with the people. I love engaging with traders. So, you know, we'll see where the session takes us today. So let me just answer some Q and As. I'm going to go back from, uh, platform to platform right now. So right now, let me get, I'm going to talk to people that are over on the red platform. What's better for you? A trade limit of like one to two or a daily loss limit? I have on my wall here, man, I've been doing this 10 years. I have this crusty piece of paper on my wall, which is my rule set. This rule set on the, on the wall is exactly what I abide by every single trading session. It says three max trades in a day. One win, I'm done. One win, one loss, I'm done. Oh, and two, I'm done. It's literally right here on my wall. Look at TikTok. TikTok wants to see it. So here. That's it right there. So that's been on my wall and I abide by those rules and I stick to them, man, because as a day trader, if you don't have a set of rules, you have nothing. Right? You have nothing. So at the end of the day, man, you make your rules and stick to them, man. It'll keep you. One, it's going to keep you disciplined and two, it's going to get you closer to being a profitable trader because when you start breaking rules, don't matter. Even if you break rules and make money, that is practicing very, very bad habits that are going to come back and bite you in the ass. I want to filter my trades. What should I do? Well, for filtering trades, man, the number one thing that I do is I, in real time, you have to go through like where this ranks, right? Where does this rank? Is this C trade? Is this B trade? Is this A plus trade? Um, you have to go through the motions here and rank your trades in real time, which is difficult for new traders because they don't know how to do that. Um, and that's something that I do. Um, and I've been doing a very long time and it gives you a filter, right? It's like, even if the trade looks like it may work out, like for example, there was a trade, I can't remember when it was, but the trade looked good, but I graded it B. Um, it's in my trade reviews on my Discord, but I graded it B and I didn't take the trade, ended up being a hundred point winner. Right? I just didn't take it. And that's, that's a part of trading. It's like, do you break your rules to get into this trade? Right? Or do you stick to your rules and not take it and wait for your checklist to play out? Because tell you guys this right now, if you start breaking habits in trading, it's going to come back to bite you. That's why trading is so hard. On Tuesday. So if you go to my trade reviews on the Discord channel, um, I don't think I put it in here. I think we, oh no, it isn't here. Yeah, it's from 10, one. 10, one, there was two trades. I graded one of them C minus, one of them C plus. Um, and then the second trade, we didn't get the entry. So yeah, that was a day where I had to watch price just run, but we were all over it. But the grading on the trade was, was, was lower than A plus for me. It wasn't even A. It was probably B minus, B plus. So we faded it, but yeah, trade filters, guys. You gotta build that into your trading, bro. You gotta. You have any tips on this shutdown? I'm super D risk till we are back up and running, brother. I, um, I'm dealing with the shutdown, just like anybody else would. I've only been involved in two government shutdowns in my career. So this is literally the second time in a decade. So like I am, this is new territory for me too. On Friday, the way that price action was in the AM session, I wish I completely didn't trade. And I posted about it on, um, on Discord. I said, I remind, remind me never to trade a government shutdown Friday, non NFP news release day ever again. It was, the AM session was horrible, but then the PM session, there was a great delivery. So I, I don't really have, I don't really have much advice, dude. It's, I'm, I'm playing it just like you would. I'm, I'm learning. Thank you guys so much for the follows over on the TikTok page, man. We appreciate you guys over there, man. Thank you. Oh, man. PJ Unprofitable up five figures trading, but still having that cloudy vision and have L weeks. Hey, man, you're going to have L weeks, dude. I mean, that happens. That, that's part of trading. You're going to have L weeks. You're going to might have an L month. Um, but you, you just gotta, as a trader, you gotta figure out what's going wrong and then make corrections to it immediately. That's why journaling is like the number one thing I tell people to do. I'm like, get TradeZella, use my code for 20% off and use the journal. It's, it's there for you guys to use. If you're not journaling your trades and understanding why you're losing and why you're winning, this is, this is not serious for you. This is just, this may be just a hobby. That's the truth. Bro, why is a WIC not a true sweep as a close before? Cause a WIC is not actually displacing below the low and the orders are not actually getting picked up. So when you're wicking and closing above, you're wicking down there, you might get some orders, but a lot of the times the market makers like to manipulate full with a candle closure below. Like for example, I'm going to, I'm going to pull up my charts now, guys. If you guys want to watch, uh, actual chart stuff, hop on over to the, uh, the red, red channel. I'm live over there with charting right now. So I'm going to show you guys. Uh, we're, somebody asked me about manipulation WICs and I think this is actually, this isn't manipulation, but I want to talk about this here because a lot of people, a lot of people do this, man. A lot of people make this silly mistake right here. So as you can see, um, the NASDAQ is trending towards sell side liquidity and it grabs it, right? And I'll see rookie traders in this situation right here. Um, I will see them. One second, chat. Are we good on YouTube right now, guys? Everything look good on YouTube? Type one if we're good on YouTube. Want to make sure you guys can see my charts and stuff. Yeah, good. Okay. Okay. So this is a, this is where a lot of traders go wrong, man. And I see this in my group all the time, bro. I see it. I see it in my group all the time. What they don't understand here is they're looking for, they're looking for now a reversal of this sell side liquidity, right? So we take this low here. Okay. And they're looking for longs now, which makes, it doesn't make any sense. When you have a lower draw liquidity, which is resting, um, in this example, it's resting at about 40 something points below. I see new traders trying to get into the market here. Like watch, let's see if we have some kind of bounce. Yeah, like they'll try to get into the market here. Right? Thinking that this market's ready to like for some kind of reversal. But in reality, this is just another continuation model towards the lower draw. Right? When you have two liquidity points that are close to each other, that are major overnight highs and lows or previous day highs and lows, you cannot look for a long here. You have to wait for that lower draw to get swept. And I see so many traders trying to make this mistake. It's, it's just, actually, you, your trading would explode if you just learned how to trade continuations. Like look at this. This is a continuation short trade towards the draw right here. Right? Market pulls back. Right? Pulls back. Inverted fair value gap, right? On the inverse, you just take the inverse, you run the stops above the inverse, uh, above the sell side and balance tier. That's a 22 point stop and you're in for 75 points. That's a one to 3.53 RR. This just gives you a clear breakout, a pullback in inversion and you're targeting lower. Right? But I see a lot of traders try to take longs here. Makes no sense. Whenever you have two overnight highs and lows that are close to each other, just look for continuation model. It's literally one of the easiest models to trade. Uh, TikTok, I've said, uh, seven times now that if you guys want to see the charts, we're over on the red platform. Links in my bio. I, I'm not doing, I can't have charts over on the, on the, on the TikTok at the same time. So you get to see my lovely face instead of the charts. Do you think next week's PA is tradable even with the condition with the government? Bro, I, I don't, I don't really think, man, I just react and I'm not like thinking ahead like that. It doesn't, doesn't really do well for traders. Um, we just react to what price tells us to do and we make trade decisions. If you try to like overthink what the market's going to do and overthink, is the market going to be bullish because of this? Is the market going to be? Is the market going to be bearish? I don't even think like that anymore. I used to. I used to have that same thought process where I'm overthinking everything, but it gets you nowhere, really. It really gets you nowhere. Hey PJ Chaez, what's the significance of midnight opening is like a true day open? Midnight open is true day open, yeah. That's where the market is actually true, like truly opening at the midnight opening price. Uh, it's a good way to use, um, where, where price is probably going to trend on the session. Like as you can see here, if we're below midnight opening price at the bell, likelihood that the market trends lower on the session. So it's kind of like a, kind of like an EMA in a way, but it's just guidance. Uh, waiting for confirmation of the reversal rather than trying to DCA and unconfirmed reversal has helped me a lot in the, in the past couple of weeks. A hundred percent, man. You should not be trying to chase reversals. It's like, it, it makes no sense. Like just find your DOLs and trade, trade into them. Like that's the easiest way to trade. Know where your draws on liquidity are and trade right into them. Um, let's see, let's talk about, let's talk about a couple of things here. First of all, I want to talk to you about standard deviations because I just want to show you how accurate standard deviations are. Um, as you can see here, right? In this manipulation leg that we come down, right? And I drew my standard deviation tool here so we can get an idea of where this price was going to go to, if it was going to go towards all time highs. Now, I was looking for a short on Friday into these lows here because it looked pretty obvious, but then it ended up working out. But we use the standard deviation tool to see where a market would draw into. And I just think it's great how the minus one standard deviation lines up perfectly with all time highs, like literally perfectly. I just, people say it's random, but look on, look how random that is there. Not random at all. And then it reverses, I'm pretty sure it reverses from two standard deviations. Which is why I love using them. My YouTube mini player is not working on your, on yours. That's unfortunate, brother. You call yourself a pro trader. Who did you work for, brother? I, I work for myself, dude. Been trading for 10 years. You don't need to work for anybody as a trader, man. You just trade for yourself. So you are pro then? That, that makes zero sense, brother. It's not like, it's not like the NBA where you get drafted. How many trades did you take last week? Uh, just a few trades, man. There wasn't too many opportunities. Honestly, price action was pretty wonky. How to find daily bias? I, I don't even look for daily biases anymore. I don't, I'm not a daily biased person anymore, man. I used to be, I used to be stuck up on the daily bias stuff and to me, it's, it's, it's just clouds your judgment. I am looking for draws on liquidity and I'm trading into them. Uh, daily bias hunting is very dangerous. What the hell that guy on about? I don't know, bro. It's TikTok kids, man. They, they don't. TikTok kids. It's, it's like he thought you, you get drafted or something. How to confirm the manipulation of the daily candle? Did Dodgy teach you inverted for value gaps? No. Our goat, what's up KWT? What's up? What's up Luke? Unc, what do you think about going for a one to one unfunded? I don't, I don't hate one to ones. I don't hate them. I mean, I really don't. Um, I don't hate one to ones. Uh, you just know that you have to have a higher win rate with one to one. So it has to be a really, really clean one to one, like A plus model. Um, I will show you guys an A plus model that we took on ES. That was an absolute banger that I took on, let's see here. We took this on 10, two, 10, two, absolute beautiful continuation model trade here. I love the continuation model, guys. I have two videos on my YouTube channel. If you have not watched that, those videos, you're, you just, you still want to make money. Like people charge $6,000 for a mentorship for that exact video. It's free on my YouTube channel. Like that, that model right there is actually the easiest model for people to understand. And guess what? I'll show it to you guys here today for free again. You want to know why? Cause it's one thing to talk about it, but it's another thing to actually spot it in real time. And I think that's where people need the education is real time trading. And that's what we do over on the number one futures channel slash Discord in the world. Hey, nice to see you, Moto. Cannot, bro, can I watch your live trading for the first day premium? Of course, as soon as you purchase, bro, you can, you can do whatever you want. Hey, what's up breaker block? Nice to see you too. Thanks for AK on the Wednesday. Yeah, this is a big day. So here, here's the breakdown of this trade, guys, right? We're, we're going to work, we're going to work on this from a 15 minute timeframe. I still haven't done a YouTube video on this yet. So you guys are getting a little sneak peek of what we took. Um, but this one's like really actually pretty straightforward. The market just at the bell displaces to the downside by 19 points now. We took this on ES over NQ this time because NQ had a uglier setup, right? NQ had a much uglier setup. And that right there is very important. Like if you guys don't understand between the indices, which one's cleaner and which one's not, you gotta start doing that because this model on NQ looks horrendous versus on ES looks way cleaner. Right? Way cleaner. So here's, here's really the simplicity of the continuation model. Market breaks out to the downside with steam, pulls back into a five minute FEG. Right? Off the five minutes, uh, FEG, we, we now locate lower draws on liquidity. So let me actually just put the draws back on the screen here. Okay. So you have, so here's, here's what we had. Here's what our draws were, right? We had London low here. Now draws are important. If you don't have draws, this trade is not even valid. You guys have to understand this part. If you don't have draws, a trade is not valid. Okay. So here's Asia low. Right? Now look how, look how, look how this looks, right? If you're marking this out. Right? This is New York PM low here. Okay. If you're marking this out. Ooh, guys, by the way, by the way, I have a little, I have a little something to tell you guys. We have been in development for the last several weeks of our, our own in-house indicator that's going to do literally so much stuff. I can't say too much about it, but it's going to be pretty goaded. It's gonna, it's gonna be really, really solid for people that are learning the continuation model, that are learning everything that kind of we trade and the style we trade, override highs and lows checklist, like a whole thing, man. It's going to be really, really solid. I'm excited about it, but I can't say much more. Um, okay, so here, here it is right here, man. If you guys are looking at this price action on this session, you could see number one, right? Remember what I just said in the beginning of today's live? You see how this market sweeps London low? That's not really a sweep. And then do you see, you see the liquidity lower on the charts here? We have London low, Asia low, New York PM low. YouTube, are you with me here today? Type, type a one in the chat. Cause I'm about to give you guys sauce. I'm about to sauce you guys up. Let me get a one in the chat over on the, on the YouTube channel, man. Get the, get the cross out this morning. Let's go, let's go, let's go. Yeah, 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 yeah. Type it, type it. Uh, people that are over on TikTok, if you want to see the screens, you gotta come over to the, uh, to the YouTube channel. I don't, I can't have dual streaming on both. You guys just get to see my lovely face. Okay, so we sweep London low, right? Not a real sweep. Okay. What did I just say? When we sweep like that and we have next, we have lows available, only a couple of points off. Do not be looking for reversals. This is where you're starting to look for continuations. Okay? So the market puts in a very nice displacement leg off the open. Okay. We, we displaced very nicely, 19 points on ES. That's a big move. Okay. Then we pull back, right? And we create a five minute sell side and buy, balance, buy side and efficiency. Oh, sorry. This is not a five. It's a one minute. It's a one minute sell side and balance, buy side efficiency right here. Okay. Now we pull back into it and we chop. Right? Let me, let me delete all this chop here. Now, right here is where we get entry. Okay. Cause we pull back into the five minute, we displace and we put in another invert inverse. Now the market goes sideways here, right? The market goes sideways. There's nothing we can do about this. Market goes sideways. I've seen this trade deliver from here, full delivery plenty of times. I've also seen it chop, but our stop is above the one minute. Okay. That's our protected stop and we just let this thing play out. Literally just let it play out. And the market displaces towards every single draw liquidity that we had lower. But the key to the puzzle here is knowing that the draws are on the screen, knowing what we're looking at here. We're looking at London low, Asia low, New York PM low. Just having that, those simple lows marked on your chart and trading off the imbalance. That's, that's, that's how easy it is. That's it. That's it. Uh, TikTok, thank you so much for the follows, man. Appreciate you guys. If you guys have any Q and A questions over there on the TikTok, just let me know. Uh, we'll, we'll do Q and As and then all, if you guys want to look at charts, we're over, we're live over on the YouTube right now. How you know where to put your stop looks, stop laws? Because I remember I took it. How do I know where? So in this situation here, that one minute fair value gap, if it goes inverse, we're wrong. So you have to have it above that stop, above that fair value gap there. That's why we had it where it was. Is there really no news this week? I mean, you should ask the government that one, bro. They, they're in the government shutdown. Uh, Urban, what's up buddy? So yeah, this trade right here netted me, uh, about $4,500 on the, on the, on the session. And it was very simple. Honestly, it took a little bit longer because of the chop. Uh, but that delivery took about an hour and 22 minutes. So $4,500 times an hour and 22. It's pretty solid, pretty solid workday. Would you say trading became easy when you started following your rules? Trading's never easy regardless of following your rules. Um, trading became easy when I detached my emotions and the P and L completely. Like when it just came down to like process over the profits, I think that's when things became a lot easier. Stressing over P and L is always going to end bad for you. So being able to detach the emotional side and the P and L side from the actual trading is when I think things get a lot easier. Um, and I also tell people, if you're starting trading in the beginning and you're like relying on trading income, don't do that. You need to have some sort of other source of money so you can freely trade. Cause people that try to trade in the beginning and quit their jobs too early and they're trying to extract money from the market, they force trades. Right? They think they gotta trade every day and they need to make money. They gotta pay bills. They force trades and they take really, really low quality trades. So in the beginning, you're going to need some sort of income uh, that basically funds your trading. Uh, didn't have the time to be in the charts yesterday. How was it with NFP delay? Any uncertainty? No, and if Friday was really bad in the AM session. Uh, the PM session actually had a good trade though. Do you ever trade other sessions? I only trade AM and I'll trade PM as well, but usually off stream. How this was 4K on four accounts while you said you were trading on your personal account? Uh, no, I took this, uh, trade on my, uh, take profit trader accounts. I always ask, I always wonder why that's like a question for somebody. I can already tell, man, mentality, that's just something that you're, you're wasting energy on the wrong questions. You know what I mean? Like you're worried about where I took my trade or what accounts I traded on. You need to be asking different questions, man. If you really want to start to like level up your mentality. Those questions are irrelevant to your growth, right? Like that, you're not getting anything out of that. So yeah, I took these on my, uh, my TPT accounts. Yeah, like it's, it's my trading business. That's irrelevant to your growth, right? You just, you want to ask different questions. What do I think about gold trading? I think gold's the devil. How you feel about Q4 so far? I mean, bro, we're, we're four days into Q4. I don't know yet. We'll see. There's a lot of, a lot of time left. We're going into retail season. We're going into Santa rally season. So we'll see, man. We should pick up. We should pick up. Um, all right, let's, let's go over, let's go to 10, one. Let's go over to 10, one, because there was a trade setup on 10, one that I ended up not taking. That was pretty textbook. Well, not pretty textbook, actually. It was, it was a lower grading for me, but we'll talk about it. I think this is it right here. Yeah, this is it right here. Guys, how have you been enjoying the reviews over on the YouTube, man? The trading recaps, the actual videos, they've been doing really well. So I appreciate your guys' support over there on the, uh, on the YouTube channel. Alright, so here, I remember this day, man. I remember this day. And this is the reason why I didn't like this. I remember this exact, the exact reason why I didn't take this trade. Okay, so we had London low here. Right? And this market ends up delivering, I remember out of no man's land, because I wanted this to come down into the London low. That would, to me, would have been A plus. So this market. Yeah, it just delivers right from here. This is why I didn't take the trade. Um, I know we have higher draws on liquidity. Okay, so that was definitely on the table. We had Asia here. Uh, and then we had New York PM high here. Oops. So we had higher draws, but with the way I trade, man, and, and from experience, it's a lower probability. Uh, it's lower probability when you're delivering out of a random external low. Now, I understand this was a data wick low too. So I guess we can mark that as a data wick. I don't think I have, yeah. So this is a data wick low. Data wick low gets swept. And then we deliver to the upside and we get, we actually get an inversion from there. So now in my, in, in my head, if we would have came down here, delivered out of the London low and the 15 minute first presented down here, I'm gonna show you guys what I was looking for. I was looking for this right here. Okay. So I was looking for this market to retrace into London low, sweep it, V-shaped recovery, and then give me an inversion and I would target it higher. Now, it didn't do that, so I didn't take it. And that's why I graded it lower. Because we were just sweeping data wicks, but the trade ends up working out. Ends up working out. Um, now here, I'll tell you what this trade looked like. Sweep data wicks, five minute inverse to the upside. Right here. Okay, now if you look at this, it looks like, well PJ, this looks pretty clean and I get it. It does look pretty clean. I just don't like trading out of data with lows a lot. I think they're a little bit sketchy. Um, and I don't really like when we leave external lows and we leave a London low down here. Now, again, I think we had SMT, very slight SMT, so it wasn't the greatest. But the trade ends up working out. You could have ran it like this. You could have ran stops, uh, a little bit tighter, probably right below the inversion, I would have put it. Uh, and then you could have targeted New York AM high for a one to four RR trade. I believe that gets tagged. Yeah, so that was another trade that was pretty solid, but didn't end up taking it this week. What am I looking at? I'm looking at my, uh, my screen here, guys. We're live on YouTube at the same time. So if you want to see charts, you gotta go over to the YouTube channel. So you're not gonna be able to see it on TikTok. What's up, babe? What's up, Brady? How are you? You guys kind of get why this was a fade for me though. Like I think, I think a lot of you guys that are in the premium probably saw this. We, we saw it in real time. And we marked it out in real time and we faded it in real time. And I believe the reason why I faded it was because the open was extremely search and destroy. Uh, and we weren't sweeping really any overnight lows. It was just a data wick release, which you know, journal it for next time and if it gets there, maybe we'll try to take a stab at it with lower risk, but um, this time it ends up working and it ends up delivering a hundred, 111 point trade. Pretty crazy. Yeah, if there's no DOL, the trade's invalid, bro. If you don't have a DOL, you have no trade. If you, if you're trading with no DOL, you literally are, you're gambling. I mean, you can, you could simplify your trading like this, right? Checklist. Do I have a draw liquidity? Is there a V-shaped recovery? Is there an inversion? Is it? So yeah, it's like, it's all you need to know is what is the DOL? I have studied so much, but I'm still stuck in this break even stage. How long you been trading for, money? Can you briefly describe how the Discord operates for premium subscription? Yeah, man, it's very simple, man. You, 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 you pay, uh, the premium subscription. You join the Discord. You get access to the starter course. You get access to all the premium education that's in the Discord. You get access to live stream recordings. You get actual, access to real live trading in the AM session with me and the PM session with our head trader. Um, you get free giveaways from all the best prop firms in, in the industry. You get a, a community of, of people. You get a support team. You get a lot, man. It's probably the, the best value Discord in the world right now. And I might have been joking about that. Would you class LRRR as a DOL? No, LRRR is not a DOL, but here's really, uh, here's a superpower. If you have, if you have LRRR and you have a DOL, that's, that's, that's very strong. I love, I love having like a DOL somewhere. Like for example, I don't know if I'm gonna find one right now, but let's see here. But if you have, if you have LRRR and you pair that with a draw, very, very strong. I don't have anything marked up right now for LRRR, really anything that I would use here. PJ, I know you're not the biggest fan of having a bias going into the day, but how about the trends? If you see prices bullish, aren't you looking for longs? Um, yeah, it depends, dude. It really depends. Where is the draw, where are the draws on liquidity? I'm serious. Like that's like the number one thing that everyone needs to have on their checklist as number one. Even if you're bullish, but you don't have a draw on liquidity and you have, you have a lower draws on liquidity, right? You gotta make a decision on, you know, you have to wait for the market to give you guidance first, right? In, in like, okay, in the example that we traded on ES, right? Look. There's only one way to do this. This is actually showing you guys, because I think it's so hard to actually explain this stuff. You really have to see it. Right? Okay, for, for example here, right? You just, just answer your question. We're bullish, right? Look at the higher timeframes. We're, we're bullish. We're, we're literally all time high chasing. Right? But if you look at this on the lower timeframe, what are we looking at here? What are we drawing towards? Okay, so here's, here's, here's kind of like, I'mma flip the script on you. Yeah, we're bullish on, on the, on the higher timeframes right now. But we're pulling back. The market just showed us we're pulling back. We showed us bearish order flow. And all of a sudden, I've got three draws of liquidity staring me in the face. You see what I'm saying? This is what reactionary trading looks like. We're not just blindly longing because I'm at all time highs. Yeah, we wanna, we would like to be longing. But if the market's telling us something and we're sitting, staring in the face of three easy DOLs, I need to figure out how to get into this trade into every single one of them. You know what I'm saying? Like this right here really should change the game for some of you people because it's, it's, this is a game changer, I think. How much is my premium? My premium is a hundred dollars and it's going up. It's going up, up, up. Does ICT 2022 silver bullet still work? I don't trade, I don't trade a silver bullet. It's, the, the silver bullet's very close to being the continuation model, but a little bit different. Bro, just dropped the major sauce. This is really major sauce. I mean, I, I, I drop a lot of this stuff. I drop all of it for free, but this is sauce right here. Right? The market's bullish, but the DOLs are staring you in the face. It just broke out of range and now I'm looking for continuations into the DOLs. That's it. Now find a model. Why do you wait for a reversal at that low? Could someone answer, could someone answer his question? Cause I, I already answered that one. That's exactly, exactly what I, what I mentioned early in the stream. I'm not calling you out by any means, but this is exactly where people make the mistake. Why are you not looking for a reversal here, chat? Why are we not looking for a reversal here? Because of DOLs. Because the draws on liquidity are resting just a couple of points lower from the next one. We have more draws on liquidity lower than we do higher. I don't know, man. If the light bulbs aren't going off for some of you guys, I don't know what to tell you. You are the go. I got my first and ninth payouts because of you. Wow, that's awesome, Marco. First and ninth. Uh, T maker, what's up, man? I'm 400 away from funded. I appreciate your videos. Hey, man. Best of luck this week. I wish you had a trading new chart right now to show us. I'm on YouTube, man. You guys can literally come over to YouTube and watch me. I'm doing it on YouTube live. On TikTok, I'm talking to you. On YouTube, I'm doing the charts. I'm seeing a lot of people turning bearish that have been previous very bullish thoughts. I don't care, I don't care what other people are doing, man. What is a draw liquidity for you? A draw liquidity is overnight higher low, a previous session higher low, uh, PD raise, um. Yeah. What days are good for next week? I don't know, bro. I don't have a crystal ball. There's no actual sweep. Yeah, that's, that's a correct answer too, but the real answer is we have draws on liquidity lower. So alls we're doing is waiting for some kind of rejection out of a sell side imbalance and then we're targeting lower. Right here. Boom. Boom. Like why would I be looking for a reversal at London low and Asia's rest right below it? You know what I mean? PJ, how long would you trade before you quit your job? I would quit my job when I was making the same amount of money and or more than the job that I was currently working. What's your top three prop firms? Ooh. Um. Well, you guys see the Alpha Futures shirt right here. I don't know if you guys see it. We got the Alpha Futures. Alpha Futures, man. I, I really, I really love, I love the company. Um, I love the guys behind it. They're young, they're hungry, they want to change the game. So right now for me, man, it's probably Alpha Futures, My Funded Futures and Take Profit Trader top three. I think those are the three of the best firms in the business right now. You can't go wrong with either of them. And always use, use code PJ. Even if there's no discount, code PJ will get you a discount. So on all firms, on all firms, we negotiated so many deals with the firms, so use the code, use the code somewhere. It's gonna work. Please tell Alpha Futures that you can copy more than three accounts. Hey, you didn't hear it from me, but that might be in the works. Don't yell at me. Don't yell at me. That might be in the works. Don't say anything. It didn't come for me. Just a little teaser. PJ, what Porsche do you have? I have a 2024 718 Cayman S. Fully down piped and ECU tuned, man. The thing is an absolute rocket ship. It's a very light car. It only weighs like 3,000 pounds. Such a fun car to drive, man. Oof, I love that car. I have driven so many different cars and every time I get back to drive my own car, I'm like, oh, I love this car. It's the handling, it's the sound, it's the speed. It's, 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 I don't know. It's just Porsche perfection, that car, man. I love the 718 platform. I love the turbo platform. There's so much you can do with it. It's just a fun car, man. So much fun to drive. What's the quickest you've seen someone turn profitable? Dude, I've seen people turn profitable in a couple, couple of months being in our Discord, man. We, we have someone who I'm gonna be meeting in Miami next week, because we have a big, a big, uh, Alpha Futures event in Miami next week. And, uh, we've got people, dude, we, we've got people making big payouts, man. We've got a guy that's in my Discord, did $80,000 with Alpha. But, um, we, we have that all the time and we have people. We have people making money all the time. So it really depends on your output, man, your work and your effort. I truly believe it took me four years to break even. It should not take you guys four years, man. It should take you a lot faster now. I, I think that somebody can become profitable, like seriously consistently profitable, probably in like a year or two years. And think about it, man. Yeah, a lawyer and a doctor, how many years of schooling is this? Nine, 10 years before you can even make six figures? So put in the two years, man. It's nothing. Do you have a job or only a full-time trader? No, man, I'm a full-time trader. I am a full-time trader, guys. I've been a full-time trader for almost six years coming up. How much do you make a trade? I make $3 a trade. The, the, the question's on TikTok. Alright, I'm going back to YouTube. Hey PJ, I can't trade New York AM session because I have to work. You think I can make it to the PM session? I mean, we've got people that literally only trade PM, so pick a session and trade it, bro. There's money to be made on each one. Thank you PJ for your lessons. I think I'm ready to be a part of your Discord. See you there. Absolutely deep. We'll see you there, brother. PJ, I'm having confidence. I'm having trouble with confidence in my trade. Sometimes I freeze or hesitate because I'm not 100% sure if I took the right entry. How can I help on that? You gotta be rock solid, man, in your model. You gotta be rock solid in your model and you gotta trust your model. If you don't trust your model, you're never actually gonna see your edge play out over time. So you can't hesitate, man. If you see your model, you gotta execute it. You know, but you do also have to have that checklist. Can't just be a crappy model. It's gotta be, it's gotta be an A plus model. You think it's better to rinse prop firms? Um. I had to think about if I, what was allowed to say about that one. But, um. I would do both. What's your opinion on DOL being into a PD array? A draw liquidity into a PD array is, it's fine. And that's usually an area you're gonna get a bounce or rejection out of. So being out of the position full, you know, into that PD array is usually a smart idea or scaling at that position. Like watch, I believe you, we get a 15 minute bounce here. Watch. 15 minute first presented and then we get that big move back up there. Uh, I believe this 15 minute holds. I'm not sure. Yeah, so look. This is a, so to, to actually answer your question, talk about draws on liquidity. So if we're drawing lower, right? We're below New York PM low and now we're into that first 15 minute presented here. First 15 minute, uh, fair value gap presented on the leg. So, um. One second. Uh, okay, so we're, we're live on YouTube. Whoever asked me the question about why you can't see my screen. So yeah, I, I really like being out of positions like into PD rays. So you're, you're asking me about PD rays being DOL. So yeah. New York PM low gets tagged, first 15 minute presented gets tagged. And thanks, hon. Um, you, 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 my wife sometimes reminds me of TikTok people asking the same questions that TikTok asked me 25 times. Anyway, she just texted me. She goes, why can't I see your screen? Love you, babe. Anyway, first 15 minute presented gets tagged into New York PM low gets flushed and then watch how you get a reversal from there. So yeah. To your point, I do like being out, uh, out of these areas after it gets swept or tagged into, because you're likely to see a bounce. What's up, sir? I can't stay disciplined with my stop loss. I keep letting myself cook with zero DTEs. I wouldn't be trading zero DTEs then, brother. I'd be switching out of that pretty fast. Yo PJ, can you copy trade evals on Alpha Zero accounts? Of course, man. Copy trade three. Government reopen next week? Uh, I hope so. How do you trade 930? I don't trade 930. I usually let the first 15 minute candle play out before we do anything. Do you think trading is a lot more discretion than the actual model you're trading? I think there's a lot that goes in discretion as well as the model, as well as your discipline, as well as a million other factors as well. Statistically, Q4 is usually the best PA, but now we're in a government shutdown, so my guess, I have no idea. Alright, um, what's wrong with top step? You mean bottom step? Dude, top step just doesn't, doesn't really improve. They don't run sales. They, they have, they, 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 you're not allowed to run trade of eight anymore with them. You're forced to use top. they have, they, 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 you're not allowed to run trade of eight anymore with them. You're forced to use top step X, which goes down all the time. I, I'm, I'm good, man. There's way better options out there now and there's way better cheaper options that are better. So. How old are you PJ? I'm 36. Hey, thanks for the content. When you get a chance, can you check gold? No, I don't trade gold. I don't even look at gold. I have no affiliation with gold. Uh, PJ, can you please show me how you move your trade to BE and trade of eight? I am new to trade of eight and made a mistake a week ago doing a BE. Want to make sure I'm doing it correctly. Um, no, I can't show you that right now, bro. I do have a video on that in my premium Discord though and how to, how to do all that stuff on trade of eight, how to set up trade of eight, how to use trade of eight, all that stuff's in my, my premium. I keep failing intraday with take profit. Any advice? Dude, with intraday trailing, you need to close trades quickly. That's the unfortunate truth about it. Before you want to build above that buffer. So in the beginning, you really need to be taking base hits until you get above the 2K buffer on a TPT account. Once you're above 2K buffer on a TPT account, you can trade freely. But you gotta get above that buffer. So in the beginning, you need to take base hits. That's, that's the key to getting above trailing drawdown. PJ, you helped me so much. Just want to say thank you, bro. I appreciate that, man. What model do you trade? I trade a couple of different models. Um. We trade inverted for vag app model. We trade, uh, continuation model. Um, we trade breaker model and we trade unicorn model. Let's go over one of my biggest trades of the month of September. Let's go over this one. Where is she? We had a banger, banger trade. This trade came like literally, I think the second day. Okay. Yeah. So let's go back to this trade. This, I want to review this one. I haven't seen this one. I haven't looked at it in a while. All right, so. Okay. Let's look at this one. So we're going to go back to September. We're going to go back to September 4th. We're going to go back to September 4th, ladies and gentlemen. We caught a banger trade on September 4th. All right, where was it? We took this trade at 10:15 in the morning, September 4th. I believe it's right here. Let's take a look here. Oh, I might've taken this on continuous contract though, because this is the old contract. I don't even know if it's the same. Yeah, no, hold on. I gotta go back to NQ one on this. Here it is. Oh, beautiful. It's already set up for me to look at. Okay, so this was a 106 point winner on another classic inverted for vag app setup where, um, the market was delivering out of the Asia low after taking London and Asia. We get the V shape recovery. All right, let's look at this in the five minute real quick. You guys can see. So markets in consolidation, market manipulates to the downside, sweeps London and Asia low. By the way, if you're a lot, if you're on Tik Tok and you're wondering what the hell I'm doing, I'm, I'm looking at charts live on YouTube right now. So if you go over to YouTube, go over to PJ Trades NQ on YouTube or go to the link of my bio on Tik Tok, I am literally breaking down my trade on the screen on YouTube. So if you're on Tik Tok, head over there. All right, so here's this trade setup and here's the, here's the idea, right? Market sweeps London low, market sweeps Asia low. Okay, now I believe it was delivering out of another for vag app. It was. So here it was here. Okay. So there's a 15 minute gap here as well. This might also be a one hour gap. It is. Okay. So now guys, if you really want to understand high probability trading, when the market is sweeping liquidity into a PD array, like I talked about earlier, and we're still looking for now reversal from here, what are we getting? We're getting internal to external order flow. So we're going internal PD array to external draw. This is the best style of trading that you can use in confluence with how I trade. So we go internal, right? V shape recovery. Okay. Now this pattern right here, I made a video about this. It went viral. This pattern right here is your literal moneymaker pattern, right? This is low, high, lower, low, higher, high. It's technically a breaker. But what this is, is a very lethal reversal pattern. This right here, if you can engrave in your brain, is a very lethal reversal pattern. Okay? Um. So we get London low, Asia low sweep, money sweep, and then we execute this trade off of this inversion right here. Okay? And we take a long, I believe, let me see my entries, my entries, my entries, my entries. We took a long right, yeah, we took a long right here and we ran the stop right here, right around 422 was the stop. Okay. And then we targeted, uh, we went break even at this blue line. We targeted TP one and one, two, and then Asia high for a full delivery up into the Asia highs. So that was the trade. That was the trade. Um. Textbook A plus right here, guys. Textbooks A plus trade. All right. Anybody have any questions about this one? Because if you could just learn how to wait for this trade model, you'll make a lot of money. If you could just wait, how to trade this, this model right here, you will make a lot of money in trading. Boom. Full delivery. 108 points. Do you go live every morning? No, man. No, no. And you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be trading every single morning, but I do go live probably around four days a week, three to four days a week usually. We usually don't trade Monday, no news at all. So I'm usually trading about four times a week. Uh, and then other times I might not be trading, maybe if I'm traveling or maybe if the market's just not presenting something, but usually I'm live a lot. I mean, usually I, I trade for a living, so I need to make money. How to not be part of the manipulation? I've got a YouTube video on this exact manipulation leg. So you should go watch it. It's called, I think it's called don't fall, don't fall for this trap. We're not talking about Wednesday, October 1st trade right now, brother. We're talking about, um, something completely different. Try to stay on topic, brother. Of your models, which one do you have the most success? Uh, in inverted for vag app and the continuation, I would say? Does price always sweep previous London Asian highs or highs? Not always. What's the game plan moving forward with government shutdown? The game plan is, man, just trade what we see. Nothing we can do about the government being shut down, but it's going to actually make things a little bit more difficult, I think, for trading. Guys, thank you for the 10K likes on the Tik Tok, man. I appreciate it. Can we get to like 15K legs on the Tik Tok? Appreciate the love over there, man. Should I be scaling my positions on evals? Like, um, I don't, I don't scale on evals, bro. I'm trying to get in and out of an eval. So I'm full position sizing. I'm trying to pass that thing in one or two trades. Would you have taken this trade if price only swept London low? No. No, you want to see that Asia low get tagged with it being so close to each other. I think it was only like, let me see. He's only 20 points away. So there's a high likelihood the market's going to sweep lower into Asia. Where can we watch your live stream? Like real live stream, like trading? That's in my Discord, my premium Discord. What's your favorite trading book? I really like Market Wizards, man. Market Wizards was really, really one of my favorite reads. Uh, it's real life traders and real life conversations with some really big, big billionaire and multimillionaire traders. And I think it's a great book to read. Inspiring. You don't wait from five minute BOS? I don't, I'm, I'm not sure why that's relevant to what I'm talking about right now. You saved us this day. Yeah, we did save, we saved us ourselves to stay on the manipulation for sure. And then we got back in and sniped it. Really one of my favorite trades of the whole month. I don't, I don't trade heat maps, dude. You asked me the question 10 times. I don't trade heat maps. Uh, I don't trade heat maps. I have my own in-house quant who uses Bookmap. And he's the, he's the pro at Bookmap and he's in my ear while we're trading. I mean, you guys, if you're in the premium, you know that. You ever have those days when you just have no clue what's going on? Hmm, it's, sometimes, sometimes, yeah, but I usually figure out pretty quickly what went wrong. I think you need to. I think you really need to know what went wrong like fast. Changed my life. Thank you PJ and God. Hey, man, appreciate that, man. God bless you. God bless you, bro. Best and worst traders in the industry. I, I'm not going to answer that question, dude. I don't care really. I'm in my own lane, doing my own thing. Changing lives of people going live for free on Saturday mornings. Who else is doing that stuff, dude? I don't care what everyone else is doing. You know, I know my, I know my trading skills. I've been doing it a long time. I don't have time for, for beef. I don't have, I just want to get along with everybody and meet people and change traders' lives and shake hands with people and make money and have a great life, bro. I'm not into all that stuff. I'm 36 years old. You know, I've got my own real estate portfolios. I travel the world and do whatever I want, when I want. I'm just living life, dude. I, I don't care about that stuff. It's not important to me. Is there a specific reason you like Take Profit Trader? Yeah, the, the specific reason is they're the only prop firm that allows daily withdrawals when you're above the 2K drawdown. So as soon as you're above buffer, you can withdraw every single day. So if you make a thousand dollars on the day and you're above the 2K draw, you can withdraw that money that day. So. How many accounts have you blown before you got it right? Oh, lots, dude, lots. Lots. Blowing accounts is a part of the business, man. I'm, I'm being so honest. You're gonna blow accounts, dude. You're gonna blow accounts. You're gonna blow live accounts. You're gonna be frustrated. You're gonna be, you're gonna be depressed. You're gonna be down. People are gonna doubt you. It's gonna look horrible. Bro, I've been doing this 10 years. And you want to know what? Now everybody wants to call me and ask me how to do it. How'd you do it? How'd you do it? How you do this? How you do that? I'm not interested in even having that conversation anymore because the people, you weren't with me in the beginning. Man, I was in the trenches, dude. I was trading London. I was trading the London at three in the morning, bro, ruining my sleep schedule to learn how to trade Forex at the time, three in the morning. You know, so I've been in the trenches a long ass time, bro. I traded gold, USD JPY, GP JPY, Euro USD, Swiss, Swiss Frank, like I've, I've been in every market and I've traded and I've tried it. Right? So you gotta put time in, you gotta put work in. This is not going to be an overnight thing, guys. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I did this for 10 years. I was unprofitable for four, like don't rush it, man. Don't rush it. But I will tell you one thing. The money that you put in and the investment that you put in will be made back and we made back very fast once it clicks. Do you prefer reversals or continuations? Uh, I really like continuations, bro. What was your strategy back then? I had none, bro. I had none. Support and resistance trading, EMAs, you know, a bunch of BS. Bro, I didn't have a mentor. I learned the hard way. I put money into the market, harder money and I lost all of it. That's how I learned. That's the truth, man. I, I learned the hard way. And with the, with the way the industry is now, with the amount of information, with YouTube lives like this, like I'm going on YouTube live and showing you guys like, bro. In 2016, we didn't have this stuff at all. ICT concepts still work well. I mean, it must be to do, doing pretty well for me to be trading at six years straight. Is it possible to be profitable trading gold? Yeah, of course. Hayden, thank you, brother. Um, okay, let me go back to some YouTube questions. Uh, all right, let's go. Okay. So guys, do we have any questions about this, this model right here? This was 107 point winner. Like you really should ask questions if you're confused because this model right here can change your life. So if you're not going to ask me questions, I guess we'll move on. Uh, guys, if you're over on the, uh, the Tik Tok, we're, uh, we're live on YouTube right now, breaking down the charts. So if you're asking me, can you show the model? I can't show you the model because, I mean, I can, but I'm live on YouTube showing the model. So let me see if I could turn this thing around. How do you turn? Oh, here. We're talking about this model right here over on, um, on YouTube. Right now. So if you guys want to come over and say hi, you can come say hi. Okay, Poppy? Fantastic. Order filled. How do you know where to put your stop with the inversion model? Something I teach you in the premium, brother. Something I teach, something I do live. Protected stops, very important. How often do you see this model in the market? I don't know, man. Maybe once or twice, three times a week, maybe, maybe. I mean, not as clean as this every week, but maybe once or twice, high A plus like this. Where it's sweeping overnight lows in, inside the AM session. You know, it's, it's, it's not like a thing that's going to happen every moment, but when it does, you gotta know where, where it is and you gotta execute it. Am I still unfunded? Yeah, I have funded. I funded and I have a live account though. I mostly in Q4 moved to live, uh, during the summer months, I do a lot of funded trading because summers are notoriously slower. Um. But I did really good in the summer, man. I did really good this summer. My summer stats were really solid. Uh, I did 367 points in August, which for August, that's really solid for one of my best months, uh, ever. Um. In July, I did a 320 in July. Um. In June. In June, we did 358. Yeah, I killed it during summer, man. Summer was one of my best. My best trading sprees I've gone on. We're on a 20 week win streak right now. And that win streak started obviously 20 weeks ago, but I believe it was in May or something. But yeah, I mean, I, I was summer trading, honestly, I think had, might've been better than what we see so far in Q4. How do you find the mindset to hold trades all the way through? Draws on liquidity, bro. Again, that answer is like so common. It's like this, it's like literally the key to the puzzle. If you have a clean draw on liquidity, you have to trust your trade. Like in this example here, right? We move stops to break even. And now I'm scaling out at, um, at my TP one, which was right here. So I scale out maybe 50% of position and I left, I left the rest to run. So I'm already paid. I'm already paid. I'm already break even. I'm protected on the trade. What else would I possibly want? Right? You gotta have the mental fortitude and now hold your trade and trust your draw. Otherwise, I mean, what else you have? You gotta be able to maximize your winners and obviously de-risk on your losers as fast as possible. That setup brings a tear to my eye. Yeah, it's a beautiful setup, bro. I, I love, I love when someone could rec, like actually recognize a beautiful looking setup and this is one of them. Uh, I'm spotting this on the one minute timeframe, man, because we, if we, if we're taking higher timeframe entries with futures, you're going to run a wider stops, which is going to be two, it's just, you can't do it in futures. You gotta be really fine tuned with your futures trading, with your stops. I have a video on that about taking partials in my premium, William. That is a premium video. Are equal highs better for DOL? Equal highs are great DOLs. Yeah, man. This is equal highs right here, relatively equal. So this is a, this is a TP one draw. BE TP one, TP two. So whenever you have relative equal highs, you can use it as a draw. But I usually like to go break even on that first, basically, if we're in here, I like to go break even here to protect myself. Uh, and I believe this is like 20 something points from here. So I usually like to go break even around that point. Yeah, it's like 24 points. So break even is appropriate. Because at this point, you don't want to see this market come back down into this. Because at this point, you don't want to see this market come back down into this, um, you, you wouldn't want to see this market inverse this gap here. And if it did, we'd be in trouble. So that's why you go break even pretty quickly here. Right? And then it comes back down into the buy side inefficiency, sell side imbalance, and then displaces from there. So that's, that's exactly what you want to see. What are you trading right now, PJ? Uh, I just traded, I traded ES and, uh, and NASDAQ, bro. Do you have any lessons on the switch from Trade of Eight or whatever to Top steps new platform? No, you don't need a lesson on that, bro. It's all over YouTube. That's like the easiest platform to use. Hey, what's up, Kai? Do you always wait, do you always wait for a retest back into the bull's for vag after inverted for candle close? No, not always. Usually you just trade the break. Um, but sometimes I do trade the, uh, the retest as well. It's kind of like discretionary. Depends on price action is, depends on the delivery is. Depends on a couple of factors, like you, it's, it's hard to answer that question. Like everyone always asks me that. Do you trade the retest or you trade the break? Honestly, I trade both. Like it depends. I like the retests, much more comfortable with the RR. Yeah, I mean, I, I like the retest too. You get a better RR on it. Can you do some backtesting? We're doing backtesting right now on YouTube, bro. You, you've missed it probably. We're almost done. Uh, we've been live for over an hour backtesting over on YouTube. PJ Trades and Q on YouTube, guys. Links in my bio on, on the TikTok page. You think the core plan is still really good on my front of futures? Of course, man. Of course. Code PJ, guys, on all, all, all prop firms. You get, uh, you'll get the max discount, even if there's no discount, you'll get a discount. This video is staying on YouTube. Yeah, yeah, they'll go right into the live section on my YouTube. You guys can watch it over if you want to. Um, all right, let, I'm trying to think about what else we can talk about here today. Um, what else we can actually discuss that's like a key, a key thing for traders, like hmm. Do, do, do. Oh, you know, we'll talk about this because this, this happened on, uh, the, this happened at the close. This was pretty clean, honestly. So I came into Friday with a lower, a lower, I was looking for lower draws. And we took two Ls trying to take shorts. Um, and it ended up turning out that we were just early and the market wanted to wait until a random 12 o'clock macro. A lunchtime macro and then ends up delivering the full 225 points to the downside. Um, so what ends up happening here is market pulls back into this one hour FEG and literally starts rejecting it like three times. So one, two, three rejections. Um, and then from there, there's a so obvious, very obvious inverse to the downside. I'll show you to you right here. Market displaces, inverses right here. Okay, this is the gap that it's rejecting from. This is the one hour gap up here. Market comes back up into there. I believe there's a bearish SMT. Yep, there's a bearish SMT. And then the market inverses here. You could have gone like, you could have traded this right here. 35-point stop for a potential 132, 160-point trade right there. Bada bing bada boom off that one hour rejection. I was looking for the same trade, but I was early in the session, man. I was, I was early and this market just retraced, 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 retraced. And ES was very decoupled. We had ES trading all-time highs, NQ trading the lows. It was a very weird market on Friday. Yeah, you can't see because I'm live on YouTube bartender. You have to go over there if you want to look at the charts. My win rate and average RR, my RR is like one to two. My win rate's probably like in the seventies. It's a little bit higher right now. Hey PJ, the A graded setup was on NASDAQ. It did a pullback into the five minute and denied just like, I don't know what that means. The trade, it denied just like the trade you took on ES. Yeah, what advice for getting out of the break even phase? Man, keep going, bro. You're close. You're close, dude. You're, you're probably one or two tweaks away from being, from being profitable, but you gotta figure out what that is. No, man, I don't have a discount code for Topstep, bro. Topstep doesn't do discount codes with influencers or affiliates or nothing. They're just, they just in their own lane, bro, doing nothing, not being creative. Bench press stats? I don't really bench press like that anymore, man. I'm 36. I just, I throw the two 25s on, I do 10 reps and I call it. What's the difference between swing and day trading? Well, swing trading is multiple days and day trading is during the day, that day. What's the next car you're getting? I have no plans on getting another car right now, man. I'm in the middle of building a house. Um, and I want to invest in some more real estate, so. Cars right now are depreciating assets. I'm not looking to, to buy more of them at the moment. I want something that's going to continue to pay me. But eventually, man, I'll, I'll look at some, some other cars. Yeah, I only use market orders, man. I only use market orders. I don't use limit orders. They're dangerous with the, with the style of trading that we do. Limiting into something when we're really reacting to zones is just not a, it's a recipe for disaster, in my opinion. So yeah, I'm always market ordering depending on what the market does and how it reacts off of a PD ray or how we're, how it moves off of a zone. How the market inverses something with speed, limit ordering in the way that we trade is dangerous. Uh, PJ, you look at the Bitcoin on the weekly chart and show me why do you think it went up? I don't look at Bitcoin, bro. I don't really care what it does. Do you invest in stocks? Of course. I have my own portfolio for all that. I got stopped out three times in a row with inverted figure. I'm out. What am I doing wrong? I have, I have no idea how to answer that question, dude. Uh, you would have to show me a chart. I would have to look at it and figure out what you're doing wrong. How am I supposed to answer that question? Can you trade Forex? I, I don't trade Forex anymore. No, I traded Forex for about four years, though. You can still trade it, yeah, anywhere, but not, not, I don't trade it. How do you know how much stop loss you're willing to risk for that trade or you're just, or you just place it? It depends on the trade. It depends on the trade setup. Depends on the trade setup, man. Stops could be different at every trade. But you always want to have around the same amount of risk that you're, you know, per trade. Do you trust AI bots to make trades for you based on your set parameters? Oh, hell no. No, 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 no. I, I, I don't. I don't. David, I changed your life, man. I appreciate that, man. Do you think in 10 years ICT will work? I mean, yeah. I think that the, I think the market is, it's been the same way it's been for many, many, many years, dude. It's, it hasn't changed. The only thing that changes is like the economic policy and the data drops and stuff, but as far as the style of trading goes, it's, it's not gonna trade. It's price action trading. It's not gonna change. Do I ever use midnight opening price as a target? Sometimes. Sometimes. What do I trade now? I trade futures, man. The NASDAQ and the S and P 500. What's the stream schedule for next week? I haven't released it yet, man. It's Saturday. Not sure what I'm gonna do next week with the stream schedule because I'm gonna be traveling. We are going to the, the Alpha Futures, uh, event. What do you do if the fair value gap is too big? Can you risk 50% of the fair value gap? If the fair value gap's too big, bro, you just have to de-risk. I mean, you could run micros, you know, on a, on a large fair value gap just to get into the trade. Yeah, I mean, but you're gonna have to de-risk. If you're running like, for example, a 66-point fair value gap, you're gonna have to run micros. Because running minis would be suicidal because it still could come up deeper into the FEG, right? You're gonna hold some DD. Um, but it's all about just like de-risking. Some people do that, man. They'll get into a wide stop trade and they'll just de-risk on micros and let the trade run. Depends on your style of trading. That's also an appropriate way to take a trade. I've learned so much from you PJ. Truly appreciate your guidance and support, man. Patrick, thank you, buddy. Appreciate it, man. Any tips on taxes for trading? No, man, I can't give you tax tips. I'm not an accountant. Just get an accountant to handle that for you. Best method of, of safely scaling a live account? Low risk, man. Slow and steady. De-size. Uh, or de-risk, run micros, man. Run micros. Will you ever do collabs with other traders? I don't know. I, I don't really have. Uh, I will be meeting a bunch of traders this, this coming weekend though, so that'd be pretty, pretty cool. What's the number one thing I should focus on with limited time? Chart time, backtesting, psychology? Um, I would say chart time and psychology. Backtesting is good, but like, honestly, there's like these backtest pros that are like great back testers and they're horrible actually forward test traders. So like, I don't know, man. I'm not too big into the backtesting thing, if I'm being honest. Chart time, real-time trading is always gonna be the trump anything and then your psychology. Like you're not gonna learn backtesting as much as you're gonna learn forward testing and being in real-life price action. So you need more chart hours, in my opinion. Can you please be honest about indicators? Do they really work or are they a scam? It depends on the indicator, bro. It depends. Um, I know people that make a lot of money training EMAs and VWOP trading and stuff like that. Um, I know a lot of people that use a simple EMA, make money. So no, they're not scams. It depends on how that works in confluence with your strategy. Oh, man. I'm better at forward testing than backtesting. Uh, that's, I guess that's a good thing, right? You would want to be good in forward testing over backtesting. How do you feel about swing trading? I mean, I love swing trading, man. I do a lot of swing trading on my, my, my personal investing accounts. Stock swing trading, you know, futures swing trading. Santi, we're gonna go ahead and ban you for that comment, bro. It's disgusting. Grow up. I'm in drawdown right now, struggling with a lot of losses. Psychology been in the check, been in check. Any tips for improving inverted for value model? So you're, you're just, you're just not understanding the model, I guess, because uh, you're struggling with a lot of losses, but your psychology is in check, which means I, I'm hoping your risk is in check too. I mean, you just gotta improve, man. Chart hours, chart hours, chart hours, chart hours, join premium. For FEGs and VFR gaps, what minute mark guarantees a much better entry? For example, a two-minute VFR will weak, will be weak, but a 550 would be better. Is the higher the timeframe for gap, the better? Yeah. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Let's say you get a five-minute inverted for vag app, um, versus like, this is a hard, this is a very hard question to answer because sometimes a one-minute FEG, the inverse of it might be higher than where the five-minute lies. So you actually have to use the one-minute over the five. That's a really hard, hard question to answer, bro. Um, but yes, the higher the timeframe, the FEG, the stronger. But sometimes like a one-minute inverse is gonna be above where that five-minute is. And we had an example like this the other day and I told the chat, oh, we can't take the two-minute here because the one-minute is actually higher. So that's, you know, it's, that's a tough one to answer. Do you think it's better to? Do you think it's better to target a fix amount or let the trade run regardless of profit? I always target a one to two, bro. A one to two RR trade. You don't need more than that, really. If you're doing, if you're consistently hitting one to two RR trades to break even over the course of time, you only need to be accurate, correct 33% of it. So one to two is the way. Do you, I use, I use, I, I use CISDs with inverted for value app. CISDs are also very good with breakers. Uh, but yeah, CISDs are very, you know, very important. A lot of the time, changing the stated deliveries are basically breakers. Hi, do you live trade? Yeah, I live trade with my, my premium group. Some traders focused only on whether the price closes within the FEG when exiting a trade, ignoring the WIC. WICs do the damage, but the bar close tells the story. What do you think of this approach? Uh, WICs do the damage and the can of closures is what you want to see. Yeah, you're right. What do you think keeps people stuck repeating the same mistakes over and over again? People literally will repeat the same mistakes over and over and over again and not make adjustments and improvements and they're not journaling what they're doing wrong. And, uh, that, that to me is the definition of insanity. Like why not? Why not make the improvement or journal what you're doing wrong or right? Uh, let's see here. So this is like, I want to show you guys, like just, I'm just looking at the charts randomly right now, just to give you guys some more examples before we call it a day here. Um, New York PM low, right? Like here's an example. We'll just walk through this like, uh, you know, if, let's say we were trading this right here. This was Wednesday, October 1st at like three in the morning. So we probably wouldn't be trading here. I mean, we'd be sleeping, but, um, there is an actual really clean five-minute inversion here. Um, but I want to get, I kind of draw your attention to, see how this is a massive five-minute here? Alright, so there's the inversion. Okay, but then there's also a five-minute above here as well. So the question probably is, where do you take? Where do you take the, um, the long? In this example, you'd be waiting for the break of this inversion. Is there a 15-minute here too? Yeah, there's a 15-minute there too. See, like this would be tough for me to want to take here because now you have to also inverse this five-minute. But once you get this, uh, this 15-minute flip, this is pretty much when you could take the trade. But here goes your question. Somebody asked me earlier about stop losses. If you take a long here, look how big this stop is. Oh, actually, yeah, I mean, this is pretty wide. It's pretty wide. On ES, it's pretty wide. See, but you can run this trade and then just de-risk and you, you know, you're pretty much good to go. But people that run minis and stuff or don't know how to de-risk or they don't know about risk management, like they're, if this trade pulls back a couple of points inside of this area, they're gonna get, they're gonna blow their accounts. But this is a good example on a wide. FEG on the 15 and then another 15-minute FEG where you would have to take it on the second FEG breaking. And then, you know, go along from there. I love you guys on TikTok, man. You guys literally are like, you have TikTok brain, most of you. For the 20th time, we're live on YouTube doing the breakdowns. If you wanna wash my face on TikTok, go ahead. Guy said, should I close my eyes and visualize? I can't, bro. My brain hurts. Is book map worth it? I don't use it. I don't use it, man. I have my, I have, I have our guy Gaines in the, in the Discord who uses it. I don't use it. I don't know if it's really, for me, it's not, I don't need it. I think a lot of people like it. So I don't really, I mean, he, he's really good at it. I mean, if you're good at it, it makes a lot of sense to use and he does really well with it. So I guess I would say it's worth it. Market order is confusing. It's not that confusing, man. It's really not that confusing at all. You're just clicking a button and you're marketing into the market. What's confusing about that? I've been trading 10 years, Colby. 10 years. I'm 36 years old. I didn't make any money for four years. Four. And then people are complaining to me when they're not profitable in one month. I'm like, dude, get over yourself. Thoughts on PA next week with news folders and government shutdown? I have no idea, man. We'll see. One, what position side would you recommend? Opinions on PB trading strategy? I don't know anything about their trading strategy, man. I don't really dabble with watching other influencers and traders. I just, I trade my own way, my own style, my own, I don't really care. The more that you're trying to influence yourself with everyone else, the way that someone else's trade, how does this guy trade? How does TJR trade? How does PB trade? How does Casper trade? Just find one mentor, stick to the model and trade it. Like, the more that you're trying to bounce from shiny object to shiny, shiny object, you're just wasting time and money. Is it better to buy a funded account? If you can't get a payout on a funded account, if you guys cannot get payouts on a funded account, what makes you think you're going to make money on a live account? I don't even know why that's a question. If you're not consistently able to pull money out of prop firms, okay, you're not gonna pull money out of a live account. So you need to become consistently profitable with a prop firm before you should ever think about putting money into a live funded account. What's up with all the dumb questions today? It's, it's mostly TikTok. When did I apply ICT concepts in your trading career? Four, four years, bro. About the fifth year. Four, five. First four, we're all baloney. Support resistance, EMAs, indicators, bots, you know, being an idiot. PJ, have you used footmap or before a book map? No, my quant uses book map though, in-house. The 2K drawdown is harder to manage than the 100, 150K drawdown? I don't know what you're saying, bro. The 2K drawdown on a 50K account versus 150K accounts? I started four months ago. I've seen massive improvement. Got my first payout this week and bought another funded account. What's the best advice you can give me going forward? Keep scaling accounts, bro. Keep scaling with that firm that you already got a payout with and keep buying more accounts and scale. Use code PJ. No, I'm serious though. Use code PJ. But no, man, you should scale with that firm and get max funding with that firm and then get, get to the next firm, get max funding with the firm. And then eventually invest into a good trade copier or use Tradeof8 and trade them individually. Firm individually and continue to just grow your business, man. That's, you can be making 100K a month just trading prop firms. For starting, is it better micro or minis? For a starter, I'd be running micros. Yeah, man. You definitely don't wanna be running minis. Run micros, learn how to scale in and out of micros and get a feel for entering into a market, putting stop loss and TPs and, you know, you're gonna make mistakes in the beginning. No, I don't, I don't have, I don't have top step code. My wife was there before the money, yeah. She's a, she's a OG. Me and Steph met through trading, actually, so. Yeah, we, we've, we've, we met through Forex trading, believe it or not, man, when I was Forex trading. That's how we met. She doesn't trade anymore, but she, she was learning it in the beginning when we first met, but then she went to hygiene school and she became a dental hygienist. So she doesn't have time. But she's, she's not gonna be working, you know, anymore when we move. My wife supported me in the start. Yes, you gotta have, bro, that brings up a great question. You guys are asking me a bunch of like just questions that are so irrelevant. So I'm gonna answer something that is relevant. You're asking me about EMAs and this and that and how much money do you make and all this crap? If you guys don't have a good support system behind you, you're never going to make it in trading. You need to have someone in your corner that is going to support you like it's life or death in this business. Because if you have someone that's gonna go like this in your trading career and they're not gonna believe in it, it's gonna be the hardest thing you've ever done. Because nobody understands trading outside of being a trader. Like, they don't get it. If you try to go up to a conversation with a normal person and you talk to them about day trading, they're gonna, they're gonna make you feel like an idiot. They're gonna be like, oh, you're gambling, you're doing this. Like, no, like, that's not what trading is. We are looking for calculated risks and we're waiting for our models to play out over time. So our edge performs, right? But if you don't have people in your corner and you're trying to do this with people doubting you and stuff, you are going to make trading mistakes. Right? I can talk to you guys all day long about models, about this, about that, about that. The real golden nuggets in trading come outside of the charts. You are going to need so much more than just a model. You're gonna need so much more than that, guys. You could have a great model, but if you don't have people supporting you, you don't have the right mindset, you don't have the determination. It takes a certain type of person. You're not working out. You're not working on your health. You're not working, putting great food into your body. You're not accelerating your life outside of the charts. What makes you think you're going to be able to beat one of the hardest businesses in the world? So I don't care what anybody says here. I've been doing this for 10 years. In the beginning, when I didn't care about the stuff I did outside the charts, I couldn't be a good trader. It did not work. Right? And I guarantee you, I'm talking to somebody here. Right? There's somebody in this, in this stream here today that is doing the exact same BS that I did when I started trading. Let me tell you, what you're doing right now is holding you back from being profitable trader. The lack of journaling, the lack of backtesting, the lack of having a, you know, having real honest conversations with the people around you that love you about what you're doing. Okay? Not eating correctly, just doing things that are not what professionals do. I know you're doing that stuff. And you're never gonna be profitable doing that. So at the end of the day, yes, we could sit here and talk for two hours about models, about inversions, about fair value gaps, about liquidity sweeps. It's all BS if at, at the end of the day, as a human being, you are not getting better. If you're not improving yourself outside of the charts, this business will shut you down so fast. I learned that the hard way. You have to get all of the pieces of the puzzle together at once, dude. That's why trading is so difficult. Just when you think you have the greatest model in the world, guess what happens? Your wife starts yelling at you the night before. You get into a mental argument about something. Okay, now your mental's chalk from the night before, but you don't realize it. You get onto the chart the next day and you lose your account because you're tilted about something that's irrelevant to what happened on the charts. Do you understand how deep this thing goes? This is a 90% psychology business, guys. It's 90%. It's 90% psychology, 10% charts. All right? So at the end of the day, man, you gotta be working on you. You gotta be focusing on your mental. You gotta be focusing on your fitness. You gotta be focusing on things that are going to benefit your mindset in this business because this is not a get-rich-quick scheme, guys. This is not a get-rich-quick. This is a long, painful marathon. And do you guys have the stamina to do it? Right? That was a lot to put down on you guys, but this is real trading and I've been through it myself. And I'm just preparing you for the outcomes. I'm preparing you for what's gonna happen. Okay? But if you do listen to what I'm saying and you start improving these different things in your life and you start putting the different pillars together and you start working on all the stuff that we discuss, you're slowly gonna start to see things turn in your favor. But if you're just trying to show up, right? And, and you're not putting the work in and you're, and you're really cutting corners and you're trying to add an AI robot into your strategy and, you know, you're just, you're not journaling, you're clicking the button and then you're going about your day and never looking at why you did it in the first place. This is not gonna work, bro. It's not gonna work. This is not gonna work for you. I'll be the first one to tell you. I'm not gonna sugarcoat this shit. It's not gonna work. So put the work in. Do all the, all the stuff that's boring, right? I mean, I always, I always find this industry really funny. Like, yeah, you could do anything you want, right? You can travel, you can take a flight. You know, I've been in Miami three times in a month. You know, you could do all that stuff, right? It's great. It's fun. But at the end of the day, if you're not doing the boring stuff behind the scenes, like, do you think I wanna go live for an hour and 42 minutes on a Saturday morning? Not really, right? But actually, what this does for me is improves my trading. I'm actually going back and looking at trades that I took and reviewing them real, in real time with hundreds of people. Keeps me accountable. Right? And actually improves my trading. What I'm doing with live streaming and trading in front of people actually has improved my trading because I journaled and documented everything. And some of you guys might benefit from literally just documenting your journey. Document it. Screenshot it. Journal it. Record it. Go back and watch it. You'd probably be embarrassed if you showed it to anybody else because you know you're breaking your rules. Right? So there's some things that you can do to kinda like flip your mental psychology around in an order to perform better. So there's a lot there. There's a lot to dissect and, man, I hope you guys, I hope, I hope you guys one day see, see true success and you continue to put the work in. And I know you guys can do it. I think there's a lot of people out there that really wanna work hard, but then there's some people in between that are just leeches that are just, they're not gonna, they're not gonna ever make it. And that's the truth, man. How do you feel about self-isolation when learning rather than having a support system? Very dangerous. Yes, when, when learning, it's fine, but that will be very dangerous long-term. You do not wanna be self-isolated for long. You're gonna need somebody to outlet to. It's, it's, it's not going to be something you wanna do forever. Maybe do it in the beginning. Self-isolate, learn the models, chart time like crazy, hours and hours on end, so you know what you're doing. But eventually, you're gonna need to come out of that isolation and have someone backing you, supporting you, talking to. Like, trading is psychology, man. You gotta be able to tell somebody what happened. Right? Not in a way that they're gonna negatively then come back at you and say, how dare you take that trade, but you lost all this money, blah, blah. You need to have an actual real-life conversation with another human being that gets it in a way that you can go invent to. Because if you self-isolate, right? And you don't talk to anybody about your trading problems, what do you think's gonna happen in your trading eventually? It's gonna be a ticking time bomb. Ticking time bomb. Do, does it feel like the market has to convince you to take a position? Yeah, basically. I need to be convinced. I need to be convinced that it fits the model and there's a lot of things that have to convince me and that's where the checklist comes in. Your advice and experience has helped me so much. Thank you, James. Appreciate that, buddy. How can I start to journal? And backtest? Backtesting is what we're doing right now on YouTube. We're going back to old trades and we're reviewing why they worked and why they didn't work, et cetera. That's just going back to the tape, going back to the tape, just like an athlete goes back to the tape to see how he performed. We do the same thing. We go back a week or two weeks ago and we see how our trade, how we traded and we go back to the trade and we see why it worked and why it didn't work. Right? And then journaling, I mean, I say this like a broken record. TradeZella. It's an automatic journal. It will log into your, you log into your broker. Okay, your trades are automatically distributed to TradeZella. Okay, which then will even give you all the stats that you've never known, knew you had before. Your win rate, right? Your, your break even, your profit, your loss, days you trade better, days you trade worse, blah, blah, blah. There's a million stats on that app, TradeZella. Use code PJ for 20% off the app, but use the damn thing, man. Use it. It's gonna help you so much. If you don't know your stats, guys, if you don't know your stats, you are not going to be profitable. So just do it, bro. Do the boring shit. Do it. It's boring, but you gotta do it. I self-isolated and learnt everything. I'm currently so close to my first payout, but when I isolated, I started to develop a bit of anxiety in my, in my social life. Any tips, bro? Get out, man. Get out. Get out. One of the best things you can do is get out and interact with other humans, man. Get out. Go to a bar. Just get into an environment where you can just chat with people, right? I, I always think, I've always said to myself, I've, I've been in sales a very long time. Getting, sales improves your social skills, right? And getting out and talking to people keeps your brain moving, right? Your, 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 your wavelength moving, like, your skills are getting improved. You don't even realize it, but when you're out in a social environment, you're actually improving yourself in a way. Because you're speaking to other people, you're fluent in conversation. Kids these days, bro, they sit in their house eight hours a day and play video games. Right? We're not improving our, our skills. These kids don't even know how to talk to people. Get out, man. Get out. Go to the gym. Get a workout and take a walk. Speak with people. It'll be, it'll be so much better for you. What up PJ? Just so you know, just so y'all know, I'm in the Discord and I pulled 5K in 40 days. That's great, man. Congratulations on that. Thank you for being a premium member. Hey PJ, how do I overcome FOMO? You don't chase, man. You don't ever chase the price. You let price to come to you every single time. You don't chase. You let prices come to you. I don't care if the trade ran 100 points and you missed it. Sorry, there's always gonna be another trade, bro. There's always going to be another trade. Now, I understand that FOMO. I understand that tilt trading, revenge trading are their big issues for traders. I get it. I, I've done it myself. But you can't do it. You just can't. You gotta stick to your rules. Right? The market will be there tomorrow, next week and a year from then. There's always gonna be another trading opportunity. Don't get stuck in the moment, right? If price does not come to you and it leaves without you, you say bye and you wait for a better opportunity, man. That's it. Never chase it. You, you might be able to improve your trading just on the fact that never chasing price. Let price come to your levels. Maybe even set alerts on your charts so you get a, you get an alert on it. Go about doing something else. Right? And if you get alerted, then there's your zone and then you can look for a model. And if you get alerted, then there's your zone and then you can look for a model. That's it. Thoughts on Bitcoin going back up to 105? We're not talking about Bitcoin right now, brother. Talking about psychology. We're talking about real trading stuff, bro. We're talking about real-life trading because it's not about the charts. It's not about the P and L. It's not about the cars. It's not about the girls. It's not about the travel. It's about your psychology, man. Can you win the game of psychology in your mind? Cause if you can crack that code, that's when the money starts coming, right? You gotta get over the fear. That fear cycle keeps people in a loop for a very long time and they never make money. Hey PJ, I joined your Discord. I joined your Discord. I lost 30 valves before you. I've now got my first payout. Hey Dalton, that's amazing, brother. Thank you so much. I appreciate you being a member. Do you look for entry right after red folder news? Um, I usually like to let it kinda settle down a little bit after the red folder comes out. How do you journal your trades? I wanna see how you use this stuff. For example, print the trade and then put the stuff into a notepad or I use TradeZella, man. I, I said that three times during today's livestream. I use TradeZella. Very simple program. It literally documents your trades for you in real-time. You then can come back over here to TradingView and screenshot your trade just like this. And then you can go here and you can start typing why I took the trade. You know, what's the setup, yada, yada, yada. Screenshot it, put it into TradeZella and you're done, bro. It's really not a complicated process. It's pretty simple, honestly. TradeZella does a lot of it for you. So, you know, you, use code PJ, grab that, that journaling software and um, do it, bro. It's very, very important. If you're not doing it, man, you're not taking it serious. That's, that's, that's the whole thing. If you're not doing it, you're not taking it serious. It's a video game for you. What's your favorite ICT model? Breakers, probably 2022, 2022. Any good book recommendations besides Trading in the Zone? Market Wizards, fantastic book. The Best Loser Wins, also a very good book. How do you deal with others around you progressing more than you? Block them, bro. Don't pay attention to that stuff. You have to be in your own lane. When I was coming up through the trading ranks chat, when I was coming up through the trading ranks, I used to try to compare myself to a man named Sean Lee. Okay, his name was Sean Lee. If you guys might know this guy, maybe I'm, maybe, maybe not. He was one of the OG trading influencers in the space. This guy took a 5K deposit and turned it into $660,000 in a month and he bought a McLaren with it. I remember it like it was yesterday because I always remember that. And I tried comparing myself to these, like to the guy that was doing that at the time. And I got nowhere, bro. I got nowhere. Comparison is the thief of joy. I wasn't even happy with what I was doing. I was progressing nicely, but I was still like, why can I get the McLaren? Why can I turn five grand into 600,000, right? Stop comparing yourself, man. Take pride in what you're doing. There are certain wins that you're doing right now that you are not celebrating. You're not celebrating that break-even day. You're not celebrating that profitable week or month. Take pride in what you're doing in your own life, in your process, right? There's something there for you to, to take a win from, right? And maybe go have a, a dinner to celebrate it, but stop comparing yourself to other people. It's gonna get you nowhere. It, it got me nowhere. I wasted time doing that, so cut that out now. How long does it take? How long does it take when you know that you got it? How long does it take? I mean, everybody's different, man. It could take, it could take, it could take years. How do you, how do you know you're about to become profitable? Guys, man, nobody's listening to me here today. Get a journal, dude. Your journals, your journaling system is gonna tell you if you're about to be profitable. Your journaling system is gonna tell you if you're profitable. Your journaling system is gonna tell you if you're unprofitable. Get a, get a journal, guys. Get TradeZella. Get any journal that, that tracks your stats. You need to know your stats. If I asked you right now in a real-time conversation, you sat down with me with PJ in a one-on-one and I said, "What day of the week is your worst day of the week?", would you know the answer? What time is your worst time during the week? Nine to 10? When does your model perform the best? What days? What hour? When are you least profitable? What's your win rate on that model? You know what I'm saying? So, you gotta know your stats, dude. Yo PJ, you helped me a lot with my psychology. I appreciate that, Andrew. Appreciate that. Have you ever tried applying your model with options? Uh, I actually have, yeah. I actually use, um, I use, I, I, I like to wait for a, a large internal zone to get tagged, like a daily, and then I just, I just swing options. Mondays for me sucks. Yeah, I mean, I don't like Mondays either. That's why I don't trade No News Mondays. I also don't love Fridays. My Fridays are not notoriously not solid days for me on my stats. Using micros to build my buffer was extremely helpful. That's awesome, Jessica. Yeah, micros to build buffer, guys. Always, always micros for buffer. You still follow ICT and watch his new videos and new concepts? I don't. I don't. I don't, man. I have a profitable system that I've kinda honed in on for my own and it works for me and I don't need anything else. The more that you try to flutter yourself with new things and the shiny object syndrome and the new... Trading's not that complicated. That's where people get confused. I will never forget this chat. I'll tell you guys this story because my premium members know the story. We had somebody in my premium group who canceled his membership and wanted to refund and his reasoning was, "Your model is not complicated enough." Not complicated enough, okay? That struck something with me because it, I realize that the human brain thinks it needs to be complicated to make money, right? And that's the farthest thing from the truth. Some of the best traders in the world and some people that I know, right? Personally, are, use some of the most simple concepts that you could put together in trading. It doesn't need to be complicated. You don't need to have some Heckenashi ash candle, um, universal pattern, you know what I mean? Like, it's not, it's, dude, at the end of the day, it's charts, it's candles moving up or down, right? It's up or down. So, keep it simple, man. It's, it's like, less is more. It's, that's how trading is. Like, do less, make more. How did you have the click for the psychological part? Man, yo, I had to fail multiple times, dude. I had to like almost go broke. Rock, rocking a hard place, man. Rocking a hard place. I, I got to a point where I'm like, I can't be doing this anymore. Why am I doing this? Why have I spent so many years of my life doing this if I'm not gonna actually do it the right way? I had to click my site, my cycle, my psychological part was off. My trading was perfect. Psychological part off. And then a fuse went, went off one day and I said, "I need to get this right. This part's messed up. This is the part that's holding me back." And I think that's a lot of people. I think that's a lot of people probably listening to this stream today, too. Liquidity is all you need to learn. DOLs, man. DOLs, baby. DOLs. DOLs is one of the most powerful things, man. Draws on liquidity. I use pivot points. Nice. Do you trade with order flow or just ICT-like models? Um, I trade a combination of a couple of different things, but price action trading, man, it's king, always will be. I'm broke too on my psychology, but I don't know how to stop it. You're gonna get to a point where you have no other choice to stop it because you're the only, you're the person that's literally ruining the entire thing. Hey, thank you for the gift. I don't know who sent that to me, but I appreciate that. How do you handle getting close to payouts and being afraid of success in a way? Wow, I just put a, um, I put a, a Twitter post out about this. I said, "Do you wanna know why most traders come within one to two days of getting a payout and then they blow the accounts?" The reason is, they get light at the end of the tunnel syndrome, right? They already are thinking about how they're going to spend the money and what they're gonna get with the payout that they forget the process that got them there in the first place. It's the light at the end, end of the tunnel syndrome, bro, right? People forget. They're like, I, they, they, it's like they, they went dummy mode and they completely forgot how they got there in the first place. So, my advice is never, if you're one or two days from payout, if you've never gotten a payout before, de-risk, man. Break that sizing down in half or even into 25%, right? And just get to payout. Get to it. Pay yourself. There's something about paying yourself, guys, if you're listening to me. If, if you're, if you've never got a payout before, right? Take the payout. I don't care if it blows the account. Take the payout. It's gonna do something to you mentally. It's gonna reset your mind. It's gonna be like, oh, man, this actually works. You know, like this is, like this actually, I can make money doing this. But if you don't realize all that hard work and you keep the money in the account, let me go, let me go large over here, and you keep the money in the account and then you blow the account, you know what it's gonna do to you psychologically? Take the money, guys. Like, take the money. Pay the trader is what I say. Pay the trader, right? Now you know it works. You realize the money, right? It becomes real in your bank account. You can spend it, you could take it out and then start from there, man. It's gonna do something to you mentally that I really can't explain. You gotta do it for yourself. Zenzaddy, thank you so much, man. Going for my sixth time to pass an eval. Hopefully I pass this time. How many evals have you traded, Dio? How many evals have you actually attempted? I've been trading for two years. I'm good at technical analysis and making profits, but honestly, I can't accept losses. Hmm, when I lose a trade, I end up losing all my profits trying to make it back. Yeah, yeah. You, I mean, I think you know the answer to your own question, Borbia. I think you know the answer. You know the answer. You're good at technicals. This sounds a lot like me in my earlier career. You're good at technicals, you make money, but you can't accept the loss. You have to. You have to become the best loser. You have to become a professional loser. I don't like to lose. I'm a winner, right? I wanna win. I'm an athlete. I played sports my entire life, right? So when I got into trading, I had to rewire my brain for four years, like, oh my God, bro. I had to learn how to take a loss. If I can't take a loss, I'm never gonna be successful as a trader. So you have to accept your risk. You have to accept that that money might be gone on a trade and you're willing to lose it and you're willing to get off and come back the next day and wait for a, a better setup, an A-plus model, whatever it is. You have to do that. That's part of my trading rules that are on my wall. One win and I'm done. One loss, one, a one-win, one-loss, I'm done. O and two, I'm done. That's it. That's my rule. It's a three-max trades in a day, max, max. Like, let's say I take a, let's say I take a break even, right? And then I take a win and I take a win. That's three trades right there. I'm done. That's it. Max, max. The more that you engage with the casino, ladies and gentlemen, the more money you're going to lose. And I don't know if that computes to some people, but the more that you engage with the market, the more money you're gonna lose. It's the same thing at the casino, bro. Why do they pump you oxygen and, and alcohol? They know you're gonna stay there and lose more money. So, we trade 9:30 AM to noon. That's the kill zone. You make money in the kill zone or you lose money on the day in the kill zone and you come back the next day. That's it. Very simple. Can you do it? Can you stick to it? Hey PJ, I'm in your premium. I have five 50K funded on top step with 1K drawdown. Now I size down using two micros. Now can you recover them? Can I recover them? What do you mean, can, can you? What? You could recover them. Yeah, you, of course you can recover them, bro. Of course. You're a couple of trades away. 1K drawdown left? That's a lot of money, bro. The things I have done with 1K drawdown is insane. I've recovered from 100 drawdown before, bro, to, to full payout. So don't get down on yourself with, with 1K. That's a lot of DD, man. What I would do right now, man, is probably scale down to two micros. Yeah, you're right. Two, right, two micros at 1K DD is perfect. So for every $500 a drawdown you have in the account, use one micro. So you have 1,000, use two. You can recover. You can recover. Thank you so much, Zen Daddy for the pumpkin, man. Appreciate the pumpkin. And the GG. I got my first two payouts. I got my first two payouts last month and now I feel like I lost it all. What should I do? Hey, man, you got two payouts, dude. You're in a less than, um, I believe it's less than 10% of traders that can get to a payout. Um, so congratulations on getting two payouts, which means you can get two payouts again pretty fast. Alright, would, not, not gonna be that difficult for you to get back to payout. Hey Dottie, how are you? Would you call yourself a mentor? Well, I've changed the lives of thousands of people and we've taken people off the streets. We've had people get down payments. Uh, we've had people buy wedding rings. We've had people get $80,000 payouts, $50,000 payouts, 10K payouts pretty consistently. So yeah, I would say I'm a mentor. For psychological reasons, don't call the trading market a casino. Teach proper things, bro. Okay, man, that's literally what it is. A casino. It's open 24 hours. Thank you so much for all the, the gifts, guys. Enrique, I appreciate it, man. Zen Daddy, you guys are going crazy. The best story is the mom that was homeless, got a place to live from your trading. That was insane, man. We had a woman that was in the Discord. She'd been trading, I think, for a couple of months. She joined the Discord. She was living out of her car. Um, and she got payouts and got her first rental and got her kids and everybody out of that situation into an apartment. I mean, that was just like, wow, wow. Really, really, really just, um, humbling stuff to see, to see happening, you know? When, in my trading, from my teachings and trading and mentorship is pretty, pretty humbling experience, man. Hey Sam, happy Saturday. God bless you, brother. I've been back testing on TradeZella and I've been losing months for like five straight months. I feel like I was affecting my real trading mentality. Any tips? Well, if you've been losing for five straight months, man, you're definitely doing something wrong inside of your actual model. Yeah, something's going, something's wrong. Something's wrong there. That would take a deeper, you know, I would have to like really dive deep into that one, man. That would, that'd be like a, a one-on-one mentorship type slot where I looked at your trading and, and really dissected it, which I think I might release something like that where we do, we do a mentorship like that where it's like, I don't know, man. I, I just don't know if I have the time, but if we did do it, I'll let you guys know, but I think it would be like swamped. Be swamped if I did that. What do you recommend? One pair, one session or one pair, two sessions? I failed six funded this year. Um, well, I trade two indices, one session. So I mean, if you can manage that, it shouldn't be too much of an issue. Let's talk about copy trading. What about it? It's not really like a hot topic. You just kinda connect your, your accounts to your copier and you copy. This is going on YouTube, right, bro? I think I can get it on YouTube. The, but no, I already have, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm recording on YouTube, so it'll be live on YouTube. We have 143 people over on the YouTube right now, 134 on the TikTok. So I appreciate you guys being here, man. I've been here for two hours and 10 minutes today. And honestly, it just kinda turned into a psychological Q and A session, which I don't mind doing. Uh, cause I think a lot of people need to hear this stuff in order to actually improve. Uh, cause I think a lot of people need to hear this stuff in order to actually improve. Um, at the end of the day, like I said, you could do charting stuff all day long, but it's this that's going to hold you back. It's more important. Is my strategy on YouTube? Most of it is. Is it fine if my trading setup shows up only six to eight times a month on average? I mean, dude, that's, that's, that's a pretty hefty amount of time. Hold on one second. Okay. What indices do I trade? I trade the NASDAQ and the S and P 500, bro. The NASDAQ and the S and P 500. Thanks PJ. Hey Navarro, how are you, man? Any tips on being on the break even stage? I think that's a really, really good stage, uh, to be in, man. Honestly. Uh, I think the break even stage is a fantastic place to be. You're getting a lot of feedback and data from the market saying that, hey, you're, you're close. And now it's all about really kind of figuring out how to get above break even. Right? So you got to break even, which is a success. Now you have to figure out what you need to do to tweak to get to profitability. Is it holding trades longer? Is identifying higher probability trades? Is it scaling? Is it draws on liquidity? Like, you know, is your model not fine tuned enough? So you gotta kind of like hone in on that one. Uh, thank you PJ C in premium. I'll see you there, Sky. What about NASDAQ with this shutdown? Any warnings? I mean, it's business as usual, man. Um, it's going to be a little bit dicier, a little bit choppier with the, the government not releasing certain, um, data points, but I mean, we have delayed data coming out now, which I guess they already received. So we'll see how that is. I mean, we didn't have NFP data, but apparently they're releasing it this week now. So first time I'm ever dealing with this. So I really don't have much feedback on that. I mean, I've never, I, I, this happened twice in a decade. So we're learning together. All right, guys. Um, I'm going to call, I'm going to call it a day here. It's been a fun time. It's been a great chat. Um, I hope you guys learned a lot. The video will be up on YouTube. If you guys want to go back through it, you know, all the different trading points, psychology tips, stuff like that, but I'm going to call it a day and I'm going to go to the gym and get a workout in and, um, yeah, man, enjoy the rest of my weekend. So have a blessed one. You guys have been amazing today. I appreciate all the followers on TikTok. I appreciate all the new subscribers on the YouTube channel. Uh, it's been a blessing to, to do this and be here with you guys and, and teach you, uh, trading habits that I wish I would have learned at a very young age. So have a great day, man. Stay blessed and we'll see you guys over in the premium. Much love. YouTube, we'll see you guys later. Peace.